I hope that that same value system that have driven Biafra civilization for 5,000 years will come back to sustain us for another 5,000 years. This evening here in Houston, Texas, we have said something that will dominate in the coming of Biafra.
Yes!
Here, all of you that did those wonderful work the years back, I call upon you now, this very day, to redouble your effort and do the same thing you did before, but only now, slightly different. Where before you had Nigeria? Remove it and put Biafra. Anybody from any good state here? From any good state? Okay. Unopana Asaila Meba, because your land has been taken over, I'm sure you know that. Do you know that? Do you know? Ehbo was taken in 1982, long time ago, and we think is a child's play. As I said before, the beloved city of Israel went through the same mess as we're going through today. They thought it was a joke. After 2,000 years, they came back. Their land was no longer called Israel, it was called Palestine. And they had to fight their way into it. The Quran says that Jerusalem belongs to Israel. The Bible says Jerusalem is the capital of Israel. But today, Israel does not even have full ownership of Jerusalem. Because of one mistake. One mistake. You know that nature abhors vacuum, do you believe that? Not just theory. It happens. You see how clean this place is? Do you see how clean it is? If you lock this place up and come back here in 20 years, all this it will decay. On its own. It would decay on its own. Because we left home. That is why the foreigners have come. If you like, you can use that gift that God gave to you in America to rescue us. If you like, you can leave it. But I assure you, if you have heard this gospel today, you return to your homes and do nothing. You will never make heaven. Anybody that hates Biafra can never make heaven. The only people who are against Biafra are either Sabotuas, their father, Maupanina Hapos Sabotuas, during the war. Or Nandeh Owsetu Rimehambana Wok. Anybody that hates Biafra is not pure Biafra blood. Go and check it anyway. That is why we are relying on you and counting on you. That is why we know that Jukokeka De Amaprumi Haniina, the giver of life. In heaven, the angels, they speak your language. I'm telling you what I know. We ask on this very day that the mercy of Almighty Creator may descend upon this very audience. Give us your grace. Give us your understanding. And make us to go back to Biafra land where we come from. And not allow ourselves to be a waste in a foreign land. Because you cannot sing the Lord's song in a foreign soil, it's not possible. You cannot. No matter how many Igbo villages you build in Virginia, a place that I would personally knock down myself. People build Chinatown to make money, to sell noodles and make money. If they had built it to make money, I can understand. What you're saying is that we no longer exist. For people to know who we are, we need to go to a museum and be looking through the window. So you don't know that's what it means? We are talking about Biafra. To rebuild Biafra. Because as long as we stand, as long as IPOB exists, our fight is twofold, two. Biafra will come and the name Nigeria will cease to exist forever and ever. And the zoo must fall. 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 IPOB! 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 One family! One family! One family! Oh, yes! All right. Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please, can we take our seats? We are not done yet. Ohanesendeoma. For those of us who are Christians, we were told from the verses of the Bible that a man was promised never to see death until he has set his eyes on the Messiah. Today, we are all witnesses. Today, we have seen the leader. We have seen the Messiah. We are Biafra, fighting for our nation. By the name of Jesus, we shall come. We are Biafra, Biafra. By the name of Jesus, we shall come. Thank you! Ladies and gentlemen, we are going into the next stanza. We are going into the next agenda. Question and answers. Please, if you have a question, you better be on this line. Please! Please! Houstonians, are we going back? Are we going back to our usual noise meeting? Deconu? We are not here as Nigerians. We are here as Biafrans, educated men and women. Deconu, please. Let me say it again. This stanza is strictly question and nothing but question. If you don't have any question, please don't come to the line. It must be question and what you will get must be answer. No story. Question. Please. We are going to be precise and explicit. 30 seconds, thank you my brother. You increased it. Look at my brother. I have not seen him for over five years. Chineke mebra mouna. All right, two lines. One from here, another line from here. Please, let us make it as a question and you'll get answer. Let me start. Let's start from here. Your name. Where you come from, Biafra? Your question. We don't want to know if you are from Virginia or you are from Atlanta. Tell us where you come from, from Biafra. Our coordinator, are we ready?
Yes, yes, please.
Sir, are we ready? All right, sir, my brother, step forward. IPOB! IPOB! One family! Ahamadi Kenma. Ahambogos Nugeodjis. Ahumonye Sserimou. Nah, Omwaya South Local Government. My question is, um, few days ago, we had some group of people that said that their name is Lower Niger Congress. I listened to them, I think their secretary, Tony Nadi. Um, he was speaking like we are fighting for the same purpose. Um, I discovered he's a very intelligent guy. So my question is, do they have any bearing with IPOB pursuing this same agenda of freedom? Thank you very much. Um, I didn't quite understand your question in the sense that when he said those things, I'm sure you asked him a question. Is that, did you ask him a question? Yes. Because I would have thought that the best thing, before listening to them, did you know about the existence of IPOB? Why are you asking me? Why did you ask them? When you met them? Okay, 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 thank you very much. The thing is this, we accommodate everybody who is fighting for the restoration of Biafra. It doesn't matter who you are. As long as you're fighting for Biafra, we accommodate you. There's no problem. So I welcome whatever thing that it is that everybody is doing to restore Biafra. But one thing is certain. The way we have chosen to fight for it is a way that excludes Nigeria from it. Understand this. Therefore, I have difficulties dealing with people that will anchor our struggle within the contraption called Nigeria, that's my only concern. That in terms of working together, praying for everybody, I do that. Everybody fighting for Biafra, I pray for you. That if you're fighting for Nigeria through Biafra, so that's how we are. I don't discuss individuals or groups. I deal with ideas. But I welcome what each and every one of you is doing to make sure that Biafra is restored. If we have any convergence anywhere, then we meet and converge. Do you understand me? But if you sell our secret to the enemy, then Yemen does a mail query. Thank you. Thank you. Step forward, next. Question? Our sister, question. Question, no story. Oliver.
Good evening, um, leader of Biafra. I, there's no way we can hear you and not respond. For some of us that are hearing you for the very first time, your messages have been distorted, even in Nigeria, but I'm hearing you for the very first time you have a message. And I know that in every generation, to fight a good cause, God usually raises somebody. And the message of Biafra is real, that's why it still resonates till today. And so, um, what baffles me is what happens in Abah, in Nigeria. Because I know the youths, they don't know how they troop out. When they say, um, Nampekanis. They all troop out and mass. They want to kill people, nobody will come out. And we, I'm saying, I don't know your message for them, so that they will look in words to know that the miracle is always in the house. Now that I'm here, I've got one thing, this Biafra is a metaphor. We have to conceive it like a child in the womb and then we nurse it and then it will bat into a geographical space. Because, sorry, the question, sorry, the question is, you have a powerful message, what message do you have for the youths about themselves? Some of them in Abah, they have, they make beddings with ricetti machines that can compete, compete with any bedding shop in these United States.
My message for them is exactly the same consistent message I gave to them in Abah in 2015. The zoo will kill us. We will kill them, but in the end, Biafra will come. We do what we do because of those that are following. We recognize the talent and the potential that our young ones possess. As you well know, I was in Israel trying to discuss with some Israeli businessmen to bring their businesses to our land, to engage our people in the interim before the coming of Biafra. And another Igbo man, as usual, okay, Zibazo, went to Israeli embassy to go and destroy that very deal. Now that he succeeded, I'm returning to Israel from the USA to make sure that very deal comes to completion. Ladies and gentlemen, please, we have very short time for this agenda. For those of us who are talking from behind, let us respect ourselves. Please. It must be question and only question, no story. Next person, please.
Um, thank you Supreme Leader of IPOB, my name is Clayton Udoh from a tribal state. Um, they call me Biafra 2.0. I'm gonna crave your discretion to do something really quick. If you're from a tribal state, can you just lift up your hand here? One. Two. Okay, that's it. Three. Okay, that's it. That's it. All right, um, Supreme Leader, I'm gonna be the future ambassador of Biafra to the United States. That's the first thing I want you to know. But however, however, I have some questions for you and I'm gonna be very quick so as not to waste time. My name is Clayton Udoh, that's my name. Those who know me know me on the media as far as Biafra is concerned. My first question is, there's two schools of thought right now. If they are tribal people, don't just join on their own cognizance without advertisement, they can go and sit down. It's, it's being spread heavily by your followers. And there's a school, second school of thought of people like me who say there should be enough reach outreach towards them because a tribal is built in such a way that there are certain powerful men that if they follow, then the rest all follow. So that's the first question I'll give to you, what do you say about that? Second question, you were born in United States, your parents are Nigerians, you're here, hands up. Only one, me number two. The second question is, what is the outreach of these people? Because a lot of the people here in the United States protect their children from the issue of Biafra. Their children should just go to school, but shouldn't talk about Biafra. What is your question about? They protect it, they isolate their children from Biafra. What is your questions about? What is your answers about that? My last question, last question, please. Last question. Last question. Is there a possibility that we could see you walk into the White House, talk to Putin and all the powerful people concerned with the Security Councils? Thank you.
IPOB! IPOB! At least nobody will accuse us again of running a Biafra that is only about Igbo people. Akwaiabom is Biafra. I don't like the name Akwaiabom. Let me use the word, name Ibibo to start with. Does anybody here know the meaning of the word Ibibo? Ibibo means Ibonta. That's enough of the word Ibibo. You see, the British brought divide and rule and they perfected it. The reason why our brother came and some of you here, as including our sister who's been doing very well in terms of our media outreach, is because of radio Biafra. That was the first time in our history, or as you are saying, over 50 years, that a concerted effort was made to correct some of the historical distortions that have clouded the reasoning and judgment of our people, especially those from the reverend areas. The first people to protest when I was arrested were Akwaiabom women. First. And as I speak to you now, there are 22 of them still in jail with a child that is only one and a half year old from Akwaiabom. Who was the last head of state of Biafra? Where's Effiong from? I don't need to beg somebody from Akwaiabom to recognize Biafra. They should be asking me, as he has done, to say this is our family and we belong. People talk about Akwaiabom and say South-South because they don't know history. Abreba people are from Akwaiabom. Do you know that? Concerning the very poor performance of our people, our children here, you know, as somebody who grew up in the village, they always tell us that, um, when the mother goat is eating here, the small one is, um, is watching. Do you follow? That means that the people here are ashamed of Biafra, are ashamed of where they come from. And if you're ashamed of Biafra, in the end, Biafra will be ashamed of you. I don't beg anybody for anything. I said to Jukokeka Biyana, Biafra is your project. Do with it as you please. But that thing that you want me to do, I will do it. I will never ever compromise. Not now, not tomorrow, not ever. It is therefore up to you, as God in heaven, to see my heart and to understand what Biafra means, not just for you to fight IPOB. And for the sake of your name, grant us Biafra. Concerning Trump or Putin. If I go to Trump, don't I need somebody to introduce me? Do you actually know how American laws work? I need somebody to introduce me to a senator. Somebody to introduce me to Trump. I can't wake up and just run into White House by just writing letter. You are going to introduce me to Trump. How are you going to do it? 3rd of July, 2020. Come out on the streets of Washington DC, a million men on the street and that is my invitation to White House. Not that we don't know what to do to enter through the back door, but there is always one question they ask us. Are your people in this country? That's the first question. Are you no politicians? Are they here? Where are they? And they start thinking which senatorial district, which congressman, woman has advantage. You have not done enough on your own to warrant me to go to White House. You have not done enough at all. When you do that very thing, bring your children to Washington on the 3rd of July, I'm giving you one year's notice. Tickets are very cheap. If you buy in advance, if you buy one, get one free. I'm gonna go here, but I won't get one free. Go out to a storm Washington and then you see what will happen. But in the meantime, Don't forget that foreign neighbors have landed. And we need to engage them. I'm very grateful. Thank you very much. Yes, this is our sister, a member of the Igbo Catholic community. Precisely, question.
Oh Protocol observed. My Supreme Leader, once again, I thank you. My name is Ngazi Chukwemeka Ibe. That's my husband. He eats on top of Biafra every time, just like you said, who would be worrying. I said this Biafra eating. I got one brother with one other man there, Trump, who called him Trump. My question is this, it had to do with, it's like what my brother there asked. He asked about White House, but I wanted to ask, I know Trump alone is not enough to solve this problem for us. I wanted to ask as a novice, I don't know, have you ever had anything to do with United Nations that can help us want to destroy it? Thank you.
Yes, is a very simple answer to your question. We are engaging the UN, the EU on a regular and consistent basis. But on their advice, we cannot make public what we are discussing because they are bound to respect the sovereignty of the zoo. Do you understand it? And I also wish to perhaps emphasize this, that only Trump can give us Biafra. Trump he don't can. All they need to do is to recognize and then the rest will follow. It happened in Kosovo, it happened in Albania, it happened in Bosnia. These things happen every day. We only need two countries. Israel and the US. Only. 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 Forget about UN, the way you see it. The UN is a robust and organization. They killed us nearly since Hong Kong got out of war. Did you and say anything? They killed us at National High School in Abba. Did you and do anything? They protested in Sudan. I don't want to get into trouble because of Islamic country. Hundred people dead, the news is everywhere, CNN covered it. They don't want Biafra to come because they are afraid of you. They know what you represent and what you can do to deter them. Thank you very much. Yes, this is our brother. From the back of that nation, they are the owners of what keeps that stupid bloody nation as a country. They are the owners of the Kudoh here. Behind the father's home, they will run you well. Now tell them where you come from.
Okay, my name is Adozie. I come from Woyabwori boy. I've been taught the way wife is taught. A very simple question I want to ask. You don't tell us how full and, my Supreme, my head. You don't tell us how full and empty for our house. You don't tell us how things, they go bad, how what they restored by Biafra. Which I want to ask, say, which in we will do to support IPOB and how we will grow?
It's a very good question. And I'm going to tell you what you are going to do, it's very simple. All of you here, as you go back to your various homes, you start IPOB family meeting. That's number one. It's very easy and don't be afraid because as they say where we come from, that multitude is your strength, Igbo beke. You must understand that very well. You don't need to be afraid. And secondly, the foreign neighbors are there, we need to drive them away. You know, older people understand how freedom should be fought. Unfortunately, some of us still haven't caught on to what we should be doing. We need funding and we need participation. Funding and the participation. But I know that if I mention funding now, that will be the only thing some people will hear. But I'll make it very easy for you. Do you believe that we need funding to fight foreign immigrants? Then can all of you commit here present to contribute $1 a month to us? And because of our nature, that $1 you will contribute is taxed the doctor. You know what that means? So Uncle Sam will actually give you back the $1. But within yourself, you've done something great, even though you don't want to do it. And I don't want somebody to go out and say, and start calculating all the error it used to be. And say if everybody there today won $1, that means IPOB will have money on. You know the way we are. Can he afford a dollar a month? Contribute a dollar a month, organize IPOB in your locality and march in Washington next year and leave the rest to me. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I can any way to a Voko, a veteran of Biafra. My I don't can't delay. My co-host is a leader. Igbo N'Yachichi. I'm a Bongo man, I'm an Igbo N'Yachichi. Ina Joka. I'm working on watching the country, my name is Man. I'm a Joka, I'm a N'Yachichi, I'm a N'Yachichi. I'm a Gua. I'm a Gua, I'm a Gua, I'm a Gua, I'm a Gua. I was in Miami at the age of 18 years and I was, I fought as a British soldier. I fought in many sectors, I was in, we formed the 35th Battalion, the 35th. The commander is Massimo. I want to, I'm a new sector. I'm a 4th Battalion. So the nature, I want to let everybody know. Let me put this on. Oh my Biafra, come on save your nation. Do you remember Biafra, come on save your nation? Oh my Biafra, come on save your nation. There's a danger, why you delay? There's a danger, why you delay? My darling, I'm moving tonight. My darling, I'm moving far away, far away. If I happen to die in a battle with you, everyone mind, we shall see night. I am but in not a rolling stone. I am but in not a rolling stone. If I happen to die in a battle with you, everyone mind, we shall see night again. I want everybody now, I don't question, I don't question that. Tell me, everybody, have to unite. Let here the, the late President of Ghana, Kuru, Kuru Ma, okay, African Union. What's the, he will require all your kind of earlier. How can he win? Join here together, only you cannot fight a full army. Akwabom cannot fight a full army. Igbo State cannot fight a leader. It's a united front. And they have a way to declare Operation Watcha Bad. Then all the, where we want to select intelligent, transparent people to mind the business of our home. Because Boalikana, run down, oh, meet the rock, hold on. Oh, meet the rock. My can hear me, one, my telephone, my way, my telephone. Because Oh no, I'm a Dian. Oh, I'm a fly, I'm a Dian. Men, they go, I can't wait. Do you want me to do that, I'm a Dian, I can't wait. I got fresh report to occupy. I will hear that, I got a, I got a, I got a, I got a. Who the guy here, who not, I can make a Dian, oh, one, I can make a Dian. I can make a lot. And we have to move, and we have to hang on. She have to choose a one, one Yenka, one Yenka, they have a question, you know. And like this, oh, we are, oh, we are a Dian. I can wait, come on, we party game play. I'm not a Dian, I'm a Dian, I'm a Dian, I'm a Dian, I'm a Dian. To cover that support, I'm a Dian. Thank you, sir. Thank you. He was one of our veterans. And as I said before, and also can never anybody who fought in the war or that claims he or she fought in the war. And today, when they tell him about Biafra, they say, no, 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 I don't want to hear it. That was a fake soldier. I don't want to listen. So thank you very much. Thank you. Now, one, we can can, please.
IPOB!
One family!
I'm Charlie Joyla, I can eat in a coffee cup. I have no, no, my chicken. Oh, you're in Tibe in the Golden State. And when I told you about, I'm tempo, oh, oh, you say I'm. Oh, I'm okay, okay. Okay, I have two questions. And some people are kind of talking, the first one is, we have problem near United States when it comes to like that about Biafra. But I also know that maybe if you speak to us on any form of strategy we can use to reach some of those years, that would be very, very good for us. Like an example, in that society, last year, in one of the college, the best student in almost them, the faculty were all Igbo's. And I was invited in the ceremony, kind of celebration they were doing. And they asked, where do they come from? Somebody said, the guy from across the world is in Biafra.
From across the world?
Yeah. And that alone has given so many of us opportunity to do things that run because of the little strength and wisdom God gave to us. Sir, when we go about doing the things we're doing, I'm also asking, what do we do? I know Israel and other countries that are doing very well, some of them, within themselves internally, there are things they do that help them get noticed wherever they are. And we are smart enough to be loved. Please, what do we do to have that link all over, at least within the United States? If all the people that are smart and intelligent, they can come out, Trump will listen to us. We have what it takes. Thank you.
I think that was a self-explanatory. If we all do what we can individually and as a group of people, I'm sure we'll be able to go mountains. Thank you very much. Next question. Ladies and gentlemen, please do not repeat ourselves. Make this question and answer, please. And make sure you say it in our local Franca English. We have our brothers from other tribes who do not understand Igbio. One name, another English, it's a big English.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dombrayeh, my colleague in microphone. My name is Namdekan, they was, they wonderful, all the things that you do. My name is Cash Izimaka. I'm from Amibo. And Amibo, Igbo land, and therefore Biafra. And I'm going to make my question very simple and short because I'm a short person. I wanted to thank you so much for the attention that you brought, even though he was a foreigner, he was a man and the Nigerian zoo brought the attention to National High School Abba. I'm a product of National High School Abba. And he keeps me awake every night. But for us to do things in so many different ways to achieve our glory, we have to diversify our attention. So my question is, I know you're a forward-thinking man and you've been thinking so forwardly for so many years for us, and I thank you. What can we do and how do we go about achieving a political landslide in Alibon? In fielding, fielding people who support and move forward the agenda of IPOB? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yambala, for that. It's a very honest question. I think he deserves a straightforward, short and honest answer. Are we going to participate in elections where there is no SAMA? There is no SAMA. But you have had reader reporting to a SAMA. I don't know what's wrong with the SAMA. Maybe it's a cockroach. Are you advising IPOB to participate in zoo politics?
No! It's a waste of time.
Thank you. Professor, tell us why you're a professor. Question is question, answer is answer. God bless you.
God bless you, Dombrayeh. My name is Namdekan. I had the privilege to you last night. So you got a lot of my questions. I only want to say one thing. I'm the best chairman of Congress. He may be shy. Well, the Congress, you're working together, not doing anything. When I was growing up, before the civil war, the Igbo man never turned the other cheek. You guys are turning all your cheeks, you are right. Actions taste louder than voice. Please, one simple advice. Do not look like a man who saw someone coming to cut off his leg and he kept saying, "Well, I will do something if I do for my neck." That is what you guys are trying to do. Wonderful Congress is having convention here, August 29th, 2031. We will have a serious meeting to get all of you involved so that we can join Namdekan.
Next, IPOB. IPOB. One family. I don't know, I'm sure it is a, probably I see. That's what I said, um. An old man told me in confidence, and I'm saying publicly, an old man, an elder told me in confidence, that if W I C, under Professor A G O four, fails to deliver, that W I C will be shut down. And with everything I have heard, after so many years, this very noble body, W I C is beginning to live up to its very. And it is also the duty and responsibility of IPOB to ensure the preeminence of W I C in the affairs of our people. And there are good men, which I know there are in W I C today.
Very few.
Also very few.
Yes, sir.
But it's better we work with very few than normal talk. So we are going to work with them, with W I C. But we are IPOB. Only me, Jopah, and your boy, your boy, you suppose you, your boy, you.
Exactly.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next.
Ah, Madike Ndewo. My name is Ogechuku Davi Ahas. I'm from Olagoro, Unwa. Father knows. My question is this. How could you encourage those of us who goes to Nigeria every year to make sure that every Biafra kid has been sponsored to go to college, high school, and elementary school? Because sometimes we are discouraged because of what we see. So what advice do you have for us?
Thank you very much. Um, what I advise you to do is this. There is no need now sending your child to school, and on the way to school, funny headman will cut off their neck. There is no need sending your child to a school occupied by Nama. Nama is in the classroom, car. I want us to solve this very problem with one strike. Once we get Biafra, we have solved our problem. I want us to focus like a laser beam on Biafra restoration. So it can come very, very quickly. But along the way, if there are children that you wish to support, I'm sure that when you begin to contribute this one dollar a month, we will have a lot to do. We will be able to run our own schools, our own hospitals as well. Are we going to leave our education in the hands of the zoo to run for us?
No!
Next. Adam, Noriah Bank, so, Makane, if you lose, cash in.
Ah, Maduke, yes, the new class. God bless you. What you could drop on doing, for those who are glad. My question for you is, is there something I want, coming to Washington this year, but I'm just going to not have a wish card, because what everybody who is here, they've been hard for them to answer the problems. So, when people go to Israel in churches, they have somebody who created to start collecting tickets in the U S, start collecting payments. So if you're going to be there, please start to change your name. The reason I say this, I agree very much with what I'm being, with all the same. When I saw the pictures of what I'm looking at my, we had a lot in downtown. I am, I'm even set for a lot of people that was, uh, excluding some areas and the rest. That's part of a lot of projects in Nigeria. Because of the value we give, and I already spoke and demanded that, can you ever send to use? It's really not freedom, it's not one Nigeria. These are the children that voted up a huge move, and you have killed them for anyone. That's what I mean to allow what, what, that I really don't hear. What I mean is how do we start making things pass to achieving this dream?
I don't talk about what happened in my house very much. Do you know why I don't talk about it very much? Because the anger is what fuels me from within. And that is why I will never rest until Nigeria collapses completely. I expect each and every person here to become somebody in IPOB.
That's right.
All of you here can be coordinators in IPOB. Don't you know that? Just go back to, you're ordinary, your street, you can mobilize people around your street. If Biafras are not coming, go and bring Jamaicans. Go and bring your, your Latin American friends. Do you know those that fought for Nelson Mandela? They were not South Africans. Everybody fought for them. Go and make the people to fight for you. The zoo, the zoo has a very formidable P R firm working for them. And listen to this place. You're fighting the zoo. Britain is fighting you. Cher is against you. Elf is against you. Halliburton is against you. Archip is against you. Jerosberger is against you. Now, do you understand the, the message already? So it requires a movement as robust and solid as IPOB to confront them. Or else, any other group you form can never ever make a dent on these people.
Yes, yes, that is true.
You can't. IPOB was chosen for this mission. Some may not like it, but it's the truth. Ah, but you may, you can't have a way, you cannot do it. We've been around for only how many years? Six years? And, and I spent, can we say, I spent almost three of that in detention and in community care. So in actual fact, we've been around for about three years. And look at where we are, without your help. Without your help, then imagine what we can do with your help. IPOB belongs to you. I have said it before, forget about the tattoo Supreme Leader, his kind name. IPOB belongs to you, it's your own. I can't drive you away from IPOB. If I wanted to be, uh, what do they call it, elite? I would have accepted what the zoo gave to me. By now, I'll be living in, is it Marcos Linear? Nice to tell you that I know we had a big short sleep in this country. I could have been there with my helicopter and private jet. And my very beautiful wife, of course. All of you here, don't be afraid. Biafra is yours. The only reason why the Fulanis came to my house to kill me and killed us in the process was because, ask them to come and kill me. That is the site that we come from. And the day they will die, because they will. I tell him, my own ho ha, I tell him what is going to happen to them. They will die. Everybody that cries for them will die with them. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, we have a representative from the youth wing of IPOB. A little girl. Please, we have to listen to this little lady. But I would describe them as those who are not so nori. Yes, okay, I won't get him. Please, give a big applause to Nnedi Ma, of Allah. Ne, Kedu?
Hi, my name is Ndenova Akapala, my parents are Mana Chi and Justin. Um, I'm standing here asking you, what can us youth as Biafran Americans do to spread your message? Or Biafran, a youth Biafran do to spread your message amongst other youth to get on board with everything Biafra related?
Repeat your question again, because of noise makers. I want everybody to listen to this girl. Ne, say it again.
So nerve-wracking. I was asking you, what can us Biafran youth do to spread your message here in the U S?
Thank you very much, thank you. The best way we can sell the message is for your parents to allow you to use the social media to engage your friends and your pay group. That is the easiest and the shortest way of doing it. We must make her more prominent. We must make her more visible. Because I can assure you that Trump will be more than prepared to listen to her than something coming from Africa like me. That is a fact. She has the authority to write to her senator. But I don't. That is how it was said, he was saying. If some of you can emulate what her parents have just done, maybe by next year, we will have two million instead of one million people. Thank you! Our distinguished leader. Ladies and gentlemen, please, this sheet of paper is going round. Follow these visions. This is going round. Make sure you have your name, your address, your email address, your telephone number. If you have not gotten it, please, get in touch with one of the coordinators. When you finish completing this, make sure he comes back to the Secretary General. This man supposed to have handled the microphone, but that's sorry to bring forth our youth. At this point, again, one name, one of them, Alaa, Mr. Alaa, Ibo, Bookwam Ibo. One of the brothers, his brothers was among those in the Bisi Kano, when he was governor, by the governor of Ibo State. He did wonderfully well as governor of Lagos State and Ibo, but his brother came out to destroy Ibo, his brother.
Disrespectful, servant, ask great lady, um, I want to thank you for your service and the risk you've taken on behalf of all the heroes, not necessarily for God behalf. And, uh, for you to come down here to tell to us, I do really appreciate this whole thing. You may have addressed my question when I was on the line and when I was sitting. Um, the key thing that I want to make, I ask you to listen carefully is this. I've spoken a lot about Biafra and all what have you, which are all part of it. And people tells me, what do they have Biafran? And then the comment they make is, since they had African liberty ruled, we have so-called democracy. Ibo State is being ruled by the evils. Endowed by evils, they have the governor, they have the House of Rep, they have all the areas, including rivers and others. The houses are not the ones ruling the east, the eastern part of the country. Now, these guys have what they call their capitalism or whatever you name it. I'm good, I'm from other states. Where, Ojusokolo ruled for eight years, what was done in other states. He handed over governorship to Tiorgi. He ruled for eight years, nothing happened in other states. Now, from what I understood, Tiorgi is now a senator representing, Tiorgi is a president representing, and Ojusokolo, and also Tiorgi Sa is now a House of Rep speaker. The question now is, do we have any plan that is measureable and going after them to recover the stolen wealth? And also, what is the plan we have for the health man?
Thank you very much. IPOB. I didn't understand what I was saying. Um, but I, I believe I picked up a few things and allow me to repeat. They may look Igbo to you, of Biafra. They may dress like Igbo, Igbo do. They may even drink by wine, as we do. But they are Fulani slaves. Fulani decides who goes into power. Somebody said he came out to go destroy Ibo State. He came out to go, his name during the war was Omasanda. He led the Fulani against his own people. The mother is from Cassino. Don't you know that? He is cousin to the dead, do you know? So you don't know the mother is from Cassino? You don't know that? Omasanda. These are the people you call your niggas. You are the architect of your own problem, like you. Ibo Lida Manu. Ibo Lida. He led army into his own land. Anywhere else in the world, he will be enemy liar. Only in our place. As long as they have money from Abuja, from Lagos, I now will here look on my own, which is not very good. Because we respect money so much, but at least you have been able to prove something. The fact that IPOP is in eighty-eight countries around the world, supported by ordinary Biafrans, goes to show that the number of good people amongst us outweigh those who are bad amongst us. And we must prevail. Are we okay? Thank you.
This is my question directly. I enjoy in with the Biafran, oh, sorry, you're speaking English, I'm sorry. We want to get Biafran. That's why I'm here today, I've looked forward for this day. Have you looked into, I'm addressing this to a leader, since so many satellite space around, around, uh, the major or core Ibo land, some of them and some of them are dragging their feet, can we not use the five core Ibo states and achieve this? Because I know they will come. And because I know, before somebody can cross Ibo land to go to other states surrounding it, he must have to give this as a pass. I know they will come, some people will not come at the beginning when the truck is on, but they will join you. Let's look and let's think about how to use what we have right now, achieve what we can get. These guys, these other states will surely join us. Please, look at that possibility. Because us trying to get these people, these people who we are here that do Biafran territories, might delay things. Thank you.
But the other part of us, the other part of us, is the same thing now, if you come to Ibo land, do you expect Nia Woda to support Biafran? It's not everywhere. These are slaves to the north that you're referring to. Ordinary people in Biafran land are in IPOP. Did you see what happened during the tragedy of Messy at home? Everywhere are complied, did you see it? We are telling you that our people are in a, in, um, Eketembe prison. Apai Pop indigenous in prison because of IPOP, because of Biafran. And you're asking me to come bring them. They have come, and some of them are in prison because of Biafran. They did this nonsense to us years ago. They give some Eflue Fuz money to dominate column Pigs of Yoruba newspapers. To give the impression that they are speaking for us. It was IPOP that destroyed that. Isn't it? Can you laugh at me? We expect our people in Abuja to do the same, those who press by to do the same. The same way we have rejected our needs in the other land issue. As we have rejected the governors, so shall they one day rise up to reject from death, from what they represent. But I'm very confident that they will wake up, and very soon, thank you. Next.
Uh, thank you very much for being here. I'm excited to see you. I have a question. And I think we can, they say we can chew gum and do something at the same time. So what I want to ask you is this. Maybe you have a reason for saying that there should not be census in Ibo land. And my thinking is that even if the Nigerians or Fulanis come and kill on Ibo, or in Okpaya land, at least they should know number of people they kill, or the number of people in Ibo land. So please, can you tell me your rationale for saying there should not be census in Ibo land? I'm a Biafran, I thought, I was, I was a Biafran soldier. My number is 4182. Thank you.
IPOP. Um, our veterans should know that this is IPOP family meeting and not any other. We never ask for nonsense issues to be carried out. Is, um, the others not us? Onanubu Hennabu? Is that also, not me? I never ask for census not to be conducted, not me. Not me. Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, please, let there be peace. We are all adults. There.
Thank you, Dan Bro, yeah? IPOP. 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 One family. My leader. Hamadike. You don't know how grateful I am. I'm one of the veterans you honor today. I shake your hand. I'm grateful. Shaking your hand. Um, you alluded, my question, my question is this, you alluded some time ago that if we can get Israel and the United States, our job may have been half solved. My question is this. Ibo added says that another one says that you understand those? So my question there is this. The leader of Israel and the leader of US Bo Akinowa, that's so friendly. Is there any attempt whatsoever? Any arrangement whatsoever? For this guy making arrangements to at least introduce you to, um, the president of this country? Omunya Indian Number says, if I could, if I could go there. If we know that we have somebody behind us, it will give us strength, courage, to go another one mile. So my question is, is there any arrangement between these two people to at least present you to Trump? That's my number one question. Number two question is this, please, I'm pleading with you. It's a request. Our brothers in the riverine area, like the Ijos, they've been accusing us that we've not made the special approach to them. I was watching the YouTube one time, and somebody was saying that when you, you are visiting United States, but that when you come, it's just the Ibo's alone gathering to welcome you. You understand what that means? So my plea is this, if you wouldn't mind, if you can temper justice with Messy, can you set a special committee of a couple of people to once again go to these our brothers, approach them in a special way? Then, all time again, lao tui shi. It's my plea. Temper justice with Messy and see what can be done so that we get these our brothers together, thank you.
Thank you very much. There is something we seem to be forgetting. People, somebody asked earlier, how far have we gone with the UN? And United States and Israel? Let me make this very clear to all of you here, Gaddu. Israel, US, UN, EU, even Britain. Listen carefully, please. IPOP. Now, not to inform. They have all sent a misery to Biafran land. All of them. To find out if these disturb buses are getting from IPOP in Europe, in America, everywhere. If the people are with us or not. And when they got to Enugu, who do you think they saw at Enugu? And, um, what do you think they got from the conversation would be, from the government to them? So they find it very difficult to understand. You're telling us one thing in Israel, across Europe, here in America. We have sent an envoy from the State Department. Bet your traditional rulers and your elite, our elite, intelligentsia. Intelligentsia, no, um, um, Konahaj. Intelligentsia. They said the people are not with you. Why do you think I wanted to march in Washington? So that the world will know that we want Biafran. I asked them to look at our sit at home record. They said that is not enough. Because they are waiting for all of you in America, sadly. It's exposed, I don't want to tell you, because some will feel very important now, and can start forming a new association somewhere. They are waiting for you to tell the world that you, no, not that you say this, that you want to Biafran. Get me one million men in Washington on the third of July twenty twenty. And when Trump calls me, I will show you my phone that is Trump calling me. Very simple. As you just said, this is, that's how it is. Regarding our people in the riverine areas, my aunt was married to to somebody, to the husband, she's now late, in, uh, Element. I used to go there on holidays as a child. I don't buy the nicotine in them and us. Everybody you see answering a job, they say that from Arachibu. Or from Omwe. And Umpur, as a matter of fact, that's Umpur. That's where they come from. They had a program called Ga Nembek a few days ago. Ga, which is good, isn't it? And you say you're not Ibo. And I can't understand this. Everybody in Bonny, B-O-N-N-Y speaks Ibo. That's the number one language in Bonny. It was Britain that crafted this division, not the Fulani. The willing structure. When Britain was leaving, for me to have access to this water, I must break it open. Something must break for me to access this water, do you agree? There is oil in our land. For Britain to get to it, they must divide the Ibo's, the Ibo's, everyone must be on their own and have access to the oil. They went to them and said, the Ibo man is dominating. They will take over your oil resources. Those of you from Waring, Ibo man will take everything. And I asked them a simple question. Before the white man came, did you see Ibo man in your village? Uh? The people that actually did the conquest, which is Fulani conquer, that was, I was, I was, even the Yoruba. They are the most telling, we peace-loving people that we are dominating. Have we forced anybody to speak Ibo language before? People don't know why I renewed my affinity with Israel and I do it in the open. Because we are one people, how do I know? They never forced anybody to speak Hebrew. They never forced anybody to accept Yigurukka Biafran. You discover God on your own and you come to the temple to pray to God. Nobody prays to you. Disappointing with us. We never forced anybody to speak our language. Is in the holy book, in the Bible, God said, if you conquer a particular place and it not give to you, you can do whatever you like, but you must go back. Yoruba that conquered people, Fulani conquered, that was, I was, I conquered for them. You look at us, very, those are the same, they're dominating. And you know what, you know envy is a bad thing. If some of you here can be envious because somebody calls me Supreme Leader. Talk less of somebody living hundred thirty miles away from you. What do you expect when they lie to them? The same thing that some people fed you rubbish about me, about IPOP. That was how they fed Ijo rubbish about Ibo. Fed nonsense to Deepi. Fed nonsense to Anan. Fed rubbish to Ethi. Some of you here entertain phone calls about gossip, never he see, sip gossip for money tonight. The person that you want me to go and see, have they come to see me? Have they come to see me? And I said, no. That is what gossip does. All Nigeria use to destroy us is simple gossip. Ashen is also. To repair that damage is what we're still fighting till this very day. But we shall overcome. A big amount of applause, please. Please, before the next question, this is from the office of IPOP secretary. If you want to be in constant touch of IOP, IPOP, please take this number, test IPOP. Nine seven triple zero, nine seven zero zero zero. IPOP. Whatever information you want, you will get the response. IPOP nine seven okroko, 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 not, 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 zero, zero, zero.
Let's, let's verify, we just want everybody to like go on your text now and text, use the number nine seven zero zero and text, use the number 97000 and text I P O B. Please, that's, it's that simple. You're dialing like you're dialing a phone number, 97000. 97000 and then you text I P O B. We'll get your information that way too.
Thank you. Next. Question, question.
I P O B. I P O B. We are unstoppable, we are fearless. And I'm from Nigeria and I came here. I'm from Nod. Oh, my dear, I have one Nogun Nod. I'm a senior sister of Agun Nod. I just, I want to say it's from Nod. And that is Idem Miligogo Biafran land. And nobody invited me here because I'm always following the Biafran news on social media. And I saw this and I have to call somebody to pick me, brought me here. And when I came here, I put on live video. I don't know how many people that are putting on live video, not just video. A lot of Biafrans all over the world are watching. Before my phone went off, I was crying. Some people from Scandinavia are watching, from China are here. But the problem, when I came here, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm a visitor, but I want to express myself. This is a great Houston. If you are coming to America, never come to Houston, never start. And this is a land of, as my daughter spoke, he said, American Biafra. As far as I'm concerned, Houston is American Biafra land. And if you like, you believe it. Because the one sad in my heart is when I came here, I don't, I didn't see the population I expected. And Biafrans, we are dominating. If you go to Scandinavia, China, we have dominated most of why they that are speaking about Biafra. But not wasting your time, I will ask you a question and also suggest something. On 2013, I was in Sweden with Agun Nod and I was walking on the street, just listening. Then every night, my brother will say Biafra, there will be, there will be a live video. I will sit down with him, I say, what is this every time, Biafra? Anywhere he went to, he will come back to listen to live. And I'll be hearing your voice, that's how he doesn't show his face. He will be hammering 2013. He'll be talking on radio and people from all over will be calling and he'll be responding. And that's I, as well as 2013. And that is when I begin to follow Biafra 13. Then something happened that day while I was still there, I was walking on the street. A Swedish, a Swedish man stopped me, you know? I said, pretty lady, to toast me, say, hello, where are you from? No, 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 just listening, where I said, from Nigeria, I said Nigeria. I said, from Nigeria, yes, he said Nigeria, where from Nigeria, I said from. And I said, no, 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 don't say you're Nigeria, you're Biafra. I was I was shocked. I was shocked. And assuming that my video is alive, my brother will be a witness, Agun Nod. I run my, I said, if what's, the man stood and told me that, please help, I can, I cannot go to Nigeria, I can come to Biafra. You know, so but my question and what I want Omadike to do here is that, please sir, Houston, I think they need transmission. Houston. As far as I'm concerned, Houston, California, Los Angeles, they're the biggest and more Biafrans are here. We need to hammer them, our governments are present from here. Talking to them because I know that, I know that Scandinavians and China, they will hammering from all their stations, from China hammering. Even when they, even they want all the governors that any state that this cattle will enter, they will bomb, they will blast their houses. And do you know why Biafran land is free? That you can even travel and go and sleep? Is because those Biafrans in other countries have sent signal to them, warned them. And they secretly go and wrote, I'm a journalist by profession. They secretly go and wrote to Guari, say, please, we will not take this cattle bearing in our land. Yes. So but what, and my question and also, is it not possible for you, before you leave here, to build up this transmission here? Where you can be following them? Sometimes you talk and a lot of questions. I think that transmission brought a lot, many of us together. And that is why anywhere you go in other states, you see crowds, you see white. Be proud to feel Biafra land, thank you.
Thank you very much. I know that a lot can be accomplished here in Houston. Only if we share our old behavior of I must be the leader. I must form my own group. I must have my own clique. If we get some of that, we will accomplish a lot. We will, I assure you. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to attempt only one more question. Alright. I stand to be corrected. Next. Come on.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Please, I have not done any texts. We are Biafrans, we are non-Nigerians. Please get your phone out, 5 minutes or 5 seconds. Get your phone out, dial 7000 and type in I P O B, let's give it 1 minute to get it down. So we can lie, it comes directly and I can tell that you texted it, right? So please, get your phones out, let's use 2 minutes to get it down. No, it will go through, type in I P O B. When you dial, when you dial the number, 97000. When it calculates, go on your text line and type in I P O B.
Please respond to her request, please. Make the text messages, please. Next question. Can we listen? Let's listen to the next question, please. Bro, this is.
I'm happy to see that you're in good health. Uh, just 2 quick things. Uh, first thing, we have elections coming up in this country. Um, the Republicans are forced by Trump and then we have Democrats on the other side. Previously, the, uh, previously, uh, we had a lot of Democrats that collaborated with Buhari to bring up all the situation we're in. There is a new group of Democrats that are trying to overthrow them. Um, I want to ask, do we have any plans to outreach to both parties? Because that's how lobbying is done in this country. Uh, the second thing I wanted to ask is, do we have any plans for forming a formal lobbying effort that can put money behind politicians? Because that's how this country works.
Thank you very much. With the number, the first one is next to 8th of July. And the second one, which I'm sure, where is this rumble? That some of them are doing already. We managed to go to the, um, office of, um, of a governor in this country because he donates to his campaign. That's how it's done. I would suggest that we form political parks, but I think it's too early for that for now. Let's keep growing and then see where we can, what we can do with that later. But if you don't get involved in your local politics, then nothing is going to happen. We must do something, starting with Washington next year, 3rd of July. Thank you very much. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a sister who came from all the way from South Sahara in Awabom State of I P O B nation. She's here to make a special presentation. She is here to make a special presentation. Please join us to welcome to the microphone, Lady Kristi Aden. Can we give a bit of applause, please? She's here.
I P O B.
One family.
I P O B.
One family.
Idenemore. Idenumore.
I greet all of you this evening. I'm here as an Awabom woman to present this to our leader. This was put together by us in Dallas. We went to a quiet meeting and the Awabom, I said, they want to do something to show that they are, they are our own people. This is it. And I want to present this. We have all the people in Awabom State, people that you can talk to and be and be in the government of Biafra. So I want to present this to our leader today. With all due respect, sir. Sir, today I want to sing this song to us. It's an Awabom song, it says, Ziti peke Biafra, nba yiti peke. Ziti peke Biafra, nba yiti peke. Namye ben boharie tokisso, abo upaoro. Boharie ye upaoro, no namdi.
A life, life in the left field.
Song idem, song idem, ehre kamme. Asawadea. Nkuku. Abariye. Abariye. Mesherende. Asawadea. Song, 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 songeite. Song idem. Afu. Please take your seats. Please go back to your seats. The noise is coming back, the noise is too much. Anna make a lot of number. I am glad you are here. Monday, I interlockuku. Please take your seats. Let's conclude these questions and answers, please. Ladies and gentlemen, please, can we take our seats? We have 4 more questions. 2 from over here and 2 from here. Yes. Bro, come forward, please. Now come forward. Please, can we listen, take your seats?
Ndewe. Omadike dewe. Yeah, I, I had a question, um. Yeah, you just mentioned that we have about, uh, that I P O B is located in almost 88 countries of the world. And in these 88 countries of the world, we have children that are being born in these countries. And my question is, if we get Biafra today, what's going to be the fate of those children? Will they have the chance to, you know, bow for a president of Biafra? Or will they have the chance to work for an office? You know, uh, without nobody questioning their citizenship? Like we all know about Obama and I think Barack Obama been born in a country. So, you know, what are we going to do to make sure that, um, that they have the same rights as someone who's been born in Biafra? Their death, that's much.
In Biafran land, everybody will be equal before the law. It doesn't matter where you're born. Once either of your parents is a Biafran by birth, then automatically your children are Biafrans. And they will be entitled to contest for the highest office in the land. We need people, your children going back to Biafra. We need everybody. And they are entitled to all that Biafra has to offer. Thank you very much. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time to hand over this microphone to another legend. When it comes to the work of microphone, Amo Biafra. Amo on Biafra, Zon Biafra. Please, my dearest brother, come forward and take the microphone and let people hear your voice. Thank you very much. My big brother from another mother. The senior man, as long as a microphone is concerned. The supreme commander. The supreme leader. Ma se, nambe, kalo. Kano. In our state, we say, ime wala ho. You have done great. My name is Eze. Anyaun. And my baptismal name is Johnny Jones. When you hear me answering J J M C here in Houston, that is the meaning of that J J M C. We are talking about spreading this gospel. I came to United States of America in the year 2014. When I came in here, I discovered that we have 5 television stations here in America. And only one is owned by an Igbo man, precisely from Ngaobala in Igbo State. They adopted me for the fact that back in Nigeria, I was presenting the popular Igbo program in IBC called Igrigendo. Listen, we are talking about how do we spread the gospel? If you can, I have one question, only one question to ask, but before then, if you tune channel 15.7, this is my director over here. He is American-born. David Preham, that is the man, you know, we are covering this. The adverts, I am the one that read your advert before this occasion. What I'm saying is this, when you want to do anything about this Biafra, I read Igbo news every Wednesday, every Sunday. Anybody that tunes channel 15.7 will see that this man that is standing here is trying to protect. Because 2 things, if you want to identify a person, either the accent or the mood of dressing. Now my question, please. There has been a threat from Asare Togobok. Ojukun, when he was begging King Sarowewa and Isaac Attaka. and Isaac Adakaboro. They failed to listen and understand until they die shamefully dead. Now please, my question is this. How is your relationship? Or how are you going about all this death threat from Asare Dogobong? I know the date to kill Ndekanalo. I know where I will get him. That is my question. Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. And as you know, my dear brother, as it is customary with me, I don't discuss individuals. I prefer to deal with their masters from the north. I deal with Fulani, Miye Tiala, and the foolishness of Omanese and Ogon. You pointed out two people that died shamefully. If they cannot learn from the experience of Adakaboro and Ken Sarowuwa, then they will never learn. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have another lady. Next, please come forward.
I ask, if we Igbo are at Biafra, and have somebody here, and people around here, I think we will achieve Biafra. I don't believe in talking, talking, but I believe in talking and doing. There is no way we will sit here, talk about joining Ndekan, IPOB, and people are laughing, to talk about it more than one hour without opening our ears to another question. I'm asking you please. I believe in Biafra, an approach for Biafra, I'm doing some harm in any talent for you. But what I want to ask to you today, the killing in Igbo land from Fulani hate men is getting out of hand. Before Biafra will come, somebody has to be alive. I'm asking you as our leader, God have praised you, brought you out, just like Moses. I'm sorry for, my name is John Oko. I'm from Ida, Tana, Igbo State, Arundisum. My maiden name, where, on the F, I answer Cindy Thomas, you may be hearing about Cindy Thomas. So what I'm asking you please, is there any plan on ground to protect our mothers, daddies, kids back home in Igbo land? Because Fulani hate men, they're all over villages. I went November to bury my mother that died here, getting back home to bury. I spent three months, to be honest with you, what we are talking here, we're just joking. We need to do something fast before these people finish us. So what are we gonna do? How are we gonna donate to bring something down to get these people out? People not have their age. And I don't believe all this we talk and when we leave, people will just laugh about it. What are we doing now to save our life? Save our people back home? Not only Ndekan. Coming to America does not mean that you cannot save your people home.
Thank you very much. I think your question is in order. It depends on what you're prepared to do. Unuma na, abana kana, achiona time. Aben? I'm not asking you, as I asked of you, I see twenty fifteen, to give me guns and to give me bullets. But I want you, as learned, reasonable people, the Fulanis have come with armaments, with weapons to kill us. And we are ready and prepared to meet them. We have been meeting them before now. What do you think we need to drag them away from our land? And then give it to us? That's our question. Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, special announcement from the Secretary General IPOB. So get me, sir.
IPOB. IPOB. One family. Um, I'm not gonna waste your time, okay? Get out your Android or iPhone or anything you use. Go to App Store or go to Playstation. We have to download. Simple radio. Under it, you're gonna see Radio Biafra. Ah Madika has given us a platform to reach out to the world. So if you want to listen to what's happening in Biafra land, you don't get it in channels. You don't get it in CNN or MSNBC. You get it under your Biafra. If you need some help, gonna come around and help you, download Simple Radio. And under it, you're gonna see Radio Biafra. That's where you're gonna get authentic news of anything happening in Biafra land. Okay, to make it abundantly clear, is Radio Biafra London? Not, Radio Biafra International? No. Radio Biafra London. So if you need some help, raise up your hand, I'm gonna help you out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, sir. Yes, sir. Be here. Please, ladies and gentlemen, we have a special presentation from one of our youths. A Biafran youth, better tomorrow, the young shall grow. Now, let's hear your name and your family name. Is that here?
I'm Ra'lo. I am Yidju Lawson. I'm a Yidju of Kalabar Kingdom, Degama Province, Biafra land. I am going to say some things, some people may not like. But before I say that, I have a confidential consignment to deliver to the leadership of the indigenous people of Biafra. Imagine I'm the captain, one of our father. You say that you will destroy Nigeria if an independent Biafra does not emerge. Today, I believe now is the time to back words with action. Now is the time to back words with action. I have devised three revolutionary military procedures on how to destroy Nigeria in a way that, in a way that, in a way that there will be no casualty and no death on the Biafra side, and Nigeria will be destroyed convincingly. This is the first, this is the first procedure. Operation Python Squeeze. Second procedure.
Use the microphone.
Operation No Air. This is the third and last procedure. Operation Hurricane Gozalo. To the leadership of indigenous people of Biafra. I expect that the leadership of IPOB who implement these military procedures are required right here to join you in implementing that. Thank you. My name is Yidju Lawson. I want to connect, I want to connect that impression that Yidju people do not support Biafra, Yidju people are fully support Biafra. We have IPOB every part of Yidju land, in Opo, in the local protocols, in everywhere. Thank you very much.
IPOB. I don't know if anybody will again come up to ask me what we are doing to unite everybody. I think they're united already. When I say IPOB is everywhere in Biafra land, we are everywhere in Biafra land. There is no need for unity because we are already united. I don't want to talk about people working for Fulani. You will have them once in a while. When they run out of money, they look for something to say about IPOB. But I can assure you, my fellow Biafran, that we will implement all the things that you have put down there. And in the end, the zoo fall. Thank you, our supreme leader. Ladies and gentlemen, if we can be standing and be listening without making noise, that's your choice. The last, but not the least. The last from this ending. The last speaker from this ending.
Thank you very much, honorable and safe. My brother. My, my. Um, it's a great honor to see you in person and to shake your hand as one of the veterans. And I was one of those that rejoiced greatly when we heard that they were not successful in their assassination attempts on you. When you spoke from Israel, I said, thank God, obashendele, onage de huona. I have a lot to say, so people have covered some of them. But I have one question. From history, we know this struggle for survival, we were not the first to start it. If we can learn from others' examples and not repeat the same mistake. In the last attempt for this, achieve this goal, we failed because mostly due to our internal enemies. Despite the overwhelming power we were fighting, we almost succeeded. If not for the subversives, as we knew them dead popularly. Uh, the Irish Republican Army, when they were fighting Britain, they had their political leadership and party representatives. They also had another arm, which the political leadership doesn't necessarily accept that they have a connection with them just for political experience. My question, one of them work. Maybe all part of the strategic thoughts and planning, how we can do what we need to do to make sure, you've already enumerated some of them, including our so-called governors. To take those, care of those internal enemies to me, they are worse than snakes and they are worse than our external enemies. Um, before I end, whatever happens, I've been there before, and I'm here now, will continue to the end. I hope we succeed. But if I'm not there at the end, I hope you will be there to set our road right. Anhamo ma se, oke chuku ndo dem, akocha. Au monu wa hebe. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ma Zafocha. You are no home. Thank you very much, thank you. Let me answer his question, Mr. MC. I'm sorry about that. We, in IPOB, we consider every variable before we do anything. We thought about participating in zoo politics, in adopting the IRA Shofain approach in Northern Ireland. But the problem is that electioneering and politicking in the zoo is not normal. It's not right. They have been doing all they can to try to ridicule and demystify IPOB. Any attempt at frontal engagement in zoo politics will result in disaster. They'll simply write the result in Abuja and announce it, and that's it. And there's nothing you and I can do about it. You have seen how useless BPC is, isn't it?
That's right.
And we are voting and praying that before we are called upon again in the zoo, even though we are still alive by then, considering what the Fulanis are doing. If we are called upon again to vote in the zoo, I seriously pray that Biafra will come before then. Anna wa bokkebe, can we give a pair of applause please? Ladies and gentlemen, this is the only occasion that has taken place in this city. The fourth largest city in the whole of United States. The capital of Biafra in the whole of Northern Ireland is fair. Whatever you cannot find in Houston, you cannot get it at Ezebunle, or Ariaraya. My brother, you want to be the last speaker? I have been asked to shorten time. But because I can see your attire, because I can see your sorrow, upashedi. Please, my coordinator, can you permit? Please emphasize and express it. Because question must be questioned.
Thank you, Anna Madika. I'm very pleased to be with you today. I've been longing for this for a long time. That's why everybody who are from Dallas, you may shine here. One word, one word. Amo nesiamte, isarangba. I just came up from the zoo, that I went to Biafra land, to USA. And everybody has spoken to it. I was in a van that I had been in. All the people I spoke to, I found out that they all believed in Biafra. I went to Abuja, all the Igbo people there, they said, and the natives, they said. All the frontmen and rabbis in our own land, Chikapai, from the gospel center, said, our road from Monday to Saturday is the no-go area. That on Sunday, everybody in charge, and who are those people? That on there, the old move. So our place, there are a lot of things going on there. Kidnapping. And they kidnapping both the people coming from abroad and our people in Nigeria. And these are our brothers too. And those kidnappers, I believe they are, all of them are IPOB member, and they believe in Biafra. So is there anything we are doing to tell these people to leave our brothers alone? They are our people. Stop kidnapping our brothers. Stop torturing them. And it's giving most of people hopeless, especially everyone in abroad, because you know, I concern the share of Biafra. Oh, that's my question. Thank you so much, boy.